Glory be the holy name of the Lord
वेलिपरत्तने विशेषम
एक बुक ऑफ़ रेवलेशन
मोण रावधारी आरंभ
Third chapter
पनि रेण्डा वसनम
12 words
कथ्रोड़िया परिसूत नामद्दीके माखिम उठावला
Glory be the holy name of the Lord
आवियानवर येवल सभाइकल्यके तन्नड़िय तूनय आनत्तम्बुलुदे ओरु कुरिक्यप्पट्टसभाइके इंदा वार्तिय चोलुगरदय नाह पार्करो
We can see if the spirit of God gives a message to seven churches a particular church was given this message
ओवर सभाइन्यूम नेलवरत्त्यूम आरिंदे अदन्डिय कुरैवुगलय अवर सुटिकाट्टुगराह
He is showing the lackness and the fullness of each church here
मुदलावध अंद्र सभिन्डे नेरैवय अवर पराट्टुगराह
First of all, he is praising the fullness of that church
पिन्ड अंद्र सभिन्डय कुरैय सुटिकाट्टी अदे सीर्वडत्तुमुडिया हालोसनी चोलुगराह
He knows he is giving the counsel finding out the lackness and how to avoid that
अप्पुडिय अंद्र आलोसनिके अदे कुल्पुडियाद भच्छत्तले अदके न्याय तिर्पूम एंडु उंडे एन्परी अवर पेसुगराह
He is speaking about all things and it is not corrected what will be the judgment for that
अदरके पिन्ड अवर चोलुगुर्दे नाह
After that what he says
अंद्र सभाइकल ओवन्ड्रुम जयंगोल्ला वेंडुम एंग्र ओर यदिर्वार पोड़ अवर सैल्बडुगराह
He is activating with the expectation each church should be an overcoming church
ओवर मनिदनुडय वाल्किलम कुरैवुगल रुकलाम नेरैवुगल रुकलाम
In each month like there will be lackness and fullness
सलस अवर्गिल निमित्तो नमकी सलस विच्छेगल वंदरकलाम
We also have some nature we might got some punishment also
अनाल देवन नमी कुरुविया इमुटुमाई पादुकातु वरुगराह
But graciously God is going on preserving us till now
अनाल देवुंडय यदिर्वार पुई नाह
What is the expectation of God
ओवर मनिदनुडम देवन यदिर्वारप्पदे अवन जयंगोल्ला वेंडुम
Each and every man should be an overcomer that is the expectation of God
ओलगम इप्पोलुदे यल्लामे जयिक्क वेंडुम एंग्र ओर यदिर्वार पोड़ धान पोइकुंडरकराह
The God is also going on should overcome
ओवर नाडुगलक्युम अंद्र आशय रुकराह
Each and every country has their desire
ओवर मनिषुनुक्युम अंद्र वेरी रुकराह
Each and every man has their desire too
उवलयाट्ट वीरनुक्युम पडिकरवनुक्युम विंजानिकुम यल्लारुकुमे जयिक्क वेंडुम एंग्र ओर उर सिंध इरुदुम उण्डे रुकराह
All these whole people as those who are studying as well as all the scientists they are having that
अदै वोलह ओलगम मनिषुर्गलक्युम मात्रम अल्लह आविकुरिय रीढियुम ओवर मनिदनुम जयिक्क वेंडुम एंडु देवन वरुबुगराह
Not only in the spiritual level also God expects everybody should be an overcomer
जयत्तिलु मूंड्रु पगडिगल रुकरदय
There are three parts in the overcoming life
अरावध इंदिक ओलगत्र निंगल पार्कुंबुलुदे
When you see in the world today
ओरिपुलय परिचय विल्लिदि नापदुमार्क गड्ढु उट्टला अदुम्पास्थान अदके बेर नाह तेर्ची लाउटल जयम एंडु धान पेर
If a child also write their examination and get forty marks she is also a confidence promoter
ओर 65 वरुबुलुदे डिस्टिंक्शन ओर उर प्यासले वेडिया वंदरला
He had sixty-five years he was sixty-five we can come in a level it's in distinction
अदरके पिन्ड अदे नूर किट्टा वरुम्बुलुदे अदन्डिय तन्मय वेर
If it comes to the hundredth mark state is different
अनाल जयम एन्पर्लयु वित्यासम उंडे
So there is difference in the victory also
इरेतान रोमर एट्टा मधियारत्ला कटैसिला आवियानवर पाउल मुलमाई पेसुम्बुलुदे मुत्रु जयिक्कर अवर्गल एंडु ओर वार्ते अवर पेसुगराह
When Paul speaks to Romans 8 chapter 9 we are overcoming fully
ओरु देवुंडय पुलय एंडु सोलुगरवन ओरुवन मुत्रु जयिकरवनाई मारवेंडु
A child of God should be an overcomer fully
इन्दिक एत्तन वेरुके अप्पुडिपट्ट ओर जयते नाह पेटुकोल वरुबुगराह
How many of you want to get that tree today
आण्डवरुकुड़े ओवर मनिदनुम जयिक्क वेंडुम एंडु वरुबुगराह
God also explains every man should overcome
ओवर मनिदनुम जयिक्क वेंडिया पलकारिंगल रुकराह
There are various things each and every man has to overcome
विदय विदयकर ओरु मनिषुने कुरित्ते ओमयय आण्डवर पेसिनार
The Lord speaks about the parable which I have so heard
नल्ल नेलत्त्ल विदयक्यप्पट्टा अंद्र नेलत्त्ल विदयक्यप्पट्टा अंद्र विदय आणदे
The seed which was sowed in the good land
अदे नाह बलने कुडुतदे
What kind of reward it gave
उन्रु मुप्पदाक बलन कुडुतदे
One gave a thirty-four
उन्रु आरुदाक बलन कुडुतदे
Another sixty-four
मत्तुन्ड्रे नूराक बलन कुडुतदे
The third one gave a hundred-four
अप्पार्गे इदे बाइबिल्ले एत्नियु नूट्रांडुलकु मुन्नाले चोनदता इप्पम मनिष अमुपत्तिजले रुनु मुप्पदुके धान जस्ट पासुन कुण्डुन्नलान वर्ला
This was the Bible it was given more centuries back Now people are bringing do thirty to thirty-five centuries
सिक्सटी वंद्ता फर्स्ट क्लासनु मुंदिया रुके
The sixty means that is first class
इप्पन अदे सेवेंटीफाइव आइके अदे डिस्टिंक्शन ओर एस्टा ओर क्वालिफिकेशन कुडुत
There is an extra qualification also given after seventy-five days
नल्ल नेलत्त्ल विदयक्यप्पट्टा अदै धान
It is sowed in a good land
अनाल अदल्युम बलन्ल वित्यास जयत्तिलु वित्यासम रुकराह
In that victory also the rest are different
अदल्लान धान कोरिंदियर्ले पाउल पेसुम्बुलुदे
So Paul speaks to Corinthians
माखिम इलु माखिमिके नाहरुके ओरु वित्यासम रुकराह
There is a difference between glory to glory he says
अनाल अन्बोवर सभाइयूम देवुंडय यदिर्वारप्पे जयिक्क वेंडु
So each and every church should the expectation of God we got to overcome
सलस चर्च कंडम मंडराह
Some churches God is condemning
यान्ड्रा अंद्र चर्चुंडे नेलवरम मिक्कूम मोसमान
Because the state of churches are very low level
रम्बक कंडम मंडराह
God is condemning more regarding them
अदे नेरडिया पच्चय यसराह
Directly is God is scolding them
अंद्र वेलिपरत्तल रेण्डु मून अधियार्थ पडिच्ची पातिके नाह सलस सभाइकल तारुमारा कडिनु गोल्डर
God is rebooking the church in the revelation second chapter
ओनिन नाह वांदी मनिदिवे
I will vomit you
ओनिया इल्लामिया किरवे
I will make you nothing
ओनिया कट्ल कडया किरवे
I will make you the bad reader
वाहिंगर जज्जुमेंट अपेसर
God is speaking so many judgments
इम्मलावुम पेसिट अवम बयंदु क्लियर आयुम्बुलु चोलराह नी जयिताल जयंगोल्लुगरवनु केन गडियो ओनके इन्दन्ना अनुवंगलां कडिकुनि सेवंस येवल अनुवंगला पेसुगराह
After talking all this when he speaks over come you will get all these experiences
ओरिपुलय परिचलमार कोरच्चित्तुन्ना परेंस आडिगराह
If the children get low mark the parents are beating them
इलाउट सिचिगराह
Are they punishing them
इल्ला कडिनु होल्डराह
Are they are rebooking them
इबडी सलस विदंगल इल्लाह ओनके पडिकुमुलिया ट्यूशन जयतो रोंगराह
Or if you can't study they are giving you tuition
इबडलाह नरकदे
Such levels are also happening
अरावलीलाह चलस पेट्रोल चोलराह नी पासायर ओनके साइकिलाद वागितार
Some parents are encouraging them you get pass mark I will give you a cycle
आण्डवरुन अंद्र नेलवर दुत्ता लवरिक्या पोट्टु लवरिक्या सभाइयो ओर वाली पडिट्टु लास्टल चोलर जयंगोल्लुगरवनु केन गुडुगरा अरुष्य ओनुन नाह सोलिडिवर
After the Lord also speaking to the Leviticus church whatever the overcomer you will get all this
नम्मुड़ि नेलवर नाह
What is our state
नम्मुड़िय जयत्तिले ओर नेरैवु उंडे
There is a fullness in our victory
इन्द्र सभाइक अवर पेसुम्बुलुदे
When he speaks to this church
जयंगोल्लुगरवनय इन्नुडिय आलयत्लान तूनाह वन्ने नेरुत्तुवे नाह
I will make him a pillar in my patriarchal who is the overcomer
इदा निकिन नम्मुड़िय सब्जेक्ट
That is the subject of today
ओरु देवुंडय पुलय जिंद ओलगत्रले अवन ओलगत्रल ओल्ला पोराट्टंगल प्रचनिगल सभाइल ओल्ला ओवर सून्नलिगलिलो अवन जयित्त वन्ने निंद्राल अवन देवुं तन्डिय आलयत्ल तूनाह नेरुत्तिरवा
A child of God if he overcome all the problems and conflicts in the church and world God will make him as a pillar here
अवनके ओरु पुदिय नामत्य धान तरुवे
I will give you a new name to him
इन्द्र देवुंडय नगरत्तिन नामत्तन नाह अवनके तरुवे
I will give you the name of the city of my God
अवन अदरुन्नु ओरु काले निंगुदे
He will not go from there
अय्यल्लो आरुमियान ओरु वाक्त
What kind of good promise here
इदरकाहे नाम यप्पुडि जयिपदे
How we can overcome
ओलगत्ते जयिक्क वेंडु
We got overcome the world
पिसासे जयिक्क वेंडु
We got overcome the devil
इन्द्र मामसत जयिक्क
We got overcome this carnal
इन्द्र मूनिय जयिच्छताना ओरु मनिष जयंगोंड्व टंड
If a man overcome these three he is an overcomer
ओलगत्ते ओरु विश्वासी जयित्याह
A believer should overcome the world
नम्मुड़ि ओलगत्रला रुकरो
We are in the world
ओलगत्रला वेलसेरो
We are working in the world
ओलगत्रला संभादिकरो
We are earning in the world
ओलगत्रल उल्ला दुवल्ला नम सैल्बडुगरो
We are also activating according to the world
अनाल ओलगम नमकुल इल्लाद अबडी नम वाल्दु गाटा
So we got to live the world should not be in us
ओलगमुम अदन्ड आशय इच्छिगलुम कोलिंदु गो
The world and the lust will be pass away
ओलगत्तिलुम ओलगत्तिल उल्लविगलिलुम निंगल अन्भुगुरादरु
Don't love the world and the things they talk pertaining to the world
ओलगत्तिन वेष्य ओनकुल वरकुरा
The proportion of the world should not come in you
अनाल ओरु विश्वासी अवगा माचुगरो
So we are making you as a believer
विश्वासमे ओलगत्ते जयिकर जयम
Our faith is one who overcome the world
येस एन्न चोनार
What Jesus say
बायपुड़ आदरंगाय
Fear not
सिदंगोल्डंगाय
You be a good person
ओलगत्रल ओनुगलकु उपतरवंगल उंडे
You are having tribulation in the world
अनालुम नाह ओलगत्तय जयित
But I will overcome the world
अब्बय येसु ओलगत्ते जयित
Jesus okay in the world
अब्बय इन्द्र ओलगत्रल रुकर इन्द्र विश्वासीगलु ओलगत्ते जयिक्क
So those believers in the world they also should overcome the world
ओलगम नमकुल इल्लाद अल्लावुल नम वाल्दु गाटा
We got to live the world should not be found in us
इल्लार्मे ओलगत्रल इल्लाह प्रसंगत्री चोलुरा ओरु चिन्न सैंबल ओनु चोल
This is a sample why everybody saying the message I will give
कटलुकुल दान मीन रुके
The fish is in the sea
अनामीनुकुल नाह गडियादे उपुगड़े इदे इल्लार्मे देरिंज अकान्सेप्ट
This is a concept everybody knows the fish has no salt in that
कटलुकुलय रुके वर्षकनका अदुकुलय कडकन जलिटी निंगल कोलम्लो उपु गोडामे मीन कोलम्लो वच्चिरंग
If you cook a meat curry after not put any salt
अदे करुवाड आगरुदे उपु बोट्टु धान करुवाड आकर
It making a dry fish also they are putting salt
अनाल अदुकुल गए नाह गडियादे Salt
Well it has no salt in the
अदल्ला अदन्डिय तनी तन्मय
It is a special nature of that
नमकुल नाह रुकराह
What we have
नी ओलगत्रल रुन्दालो ओलगत्तुम ओनकुल रुको
Though you are in the world the world should not be in you
उन्द्र ओलग पच्चु ओनकुल रुको
You should not have the desire of the world in you
अलात्त येसुकु स्वरत्तल चोलराह ओलगत्तिन आदिवर्धी इदो वरुगराह अवनुडय इदे एन्नुडत्ले ओन्नमय गड़े
Because of the captain of the world is coming I don't have anything of him
ओलगत्तिन आदिवर्धी वंदु पापा नम्मुड़ि इदिंग इरुका
The captain of the world will come and see whether mine is here or not
नम्मुड़िय पात्तियल याराद रुकांग
Is there any party of mine is here or not
इप्पो ओलगत्तिन आदिवर्धी इंग वंदु टान्न वच्चिगो
The world comes here now
ओनुल एत्तन वेरु पोई शेकन कुडुका पोरिंग इल्ला विष्पन्न पोरिंग
Come here we go to Sheikar I have wished him
चलर नम्मुड़ि वाल्किल नम्मुड़ि ओलगत्तिन आदिवर्धी ओड़े ओल्ला ओतुपोरोन योसु बार
How much we are going agree with the worldly captain
अंद्र ओलग पेच इरुदाले वंदुरो
If we got the world's speech it will come in us
ओलग न्यानम देवुनकु मुन्बाह एबुडिरुकरदे पाईथियमाय रुकर
The wisdom of the world is foolishness in front of God
ओलग न्यानत्तोच्चि निंग कोडी कनक्ले संभादिकलामे तवर अदे देवुंडय पार्वेल पादालत्त्त्य रुन्दोरु न्यान धान जोलपुट्टुगर
It is said about the world wisdom is coming from the hill We can earn more money using that
परत्त्य रुन्दोरु न्यान अवर इन्द्र ओलगत्रल रुकर न्यानो वेर
The wisdom of the heaven is different from the wisdom of this world
इन्दिक एत्नियु वेर तन्नुडय आरिवय यंद्र दुत्तलियो सलवलिकर
Many people are using the knowledge in various ways nowadays
अनाल नम्मुड़िय जीवित्तल नम जयिकरोम
Are we getting victory in our life
ओलगत्ता फर्स्ट ओरु विश्वासी सभाइकल वंद्ता परगे ओलगत्ता वरुत्तरुन् ओधिकरुन् तल्लीन
First of all a believer when you come to the church you got to hate and remove the world from you
अनाल अदे अंद्र ओलगत्तिन वेष्यत्त्यला नम आदिमा फैशनल उल्लपोरदल
So we are not going in the fashion of the world much here
अदे नमकुल वरुद्दके नम एडंगुडुकु
We don't give room also to come that should come in us
इरेणावध फोल्लांगणे नम जयितो लाइरुकमेंट
We got to overcome the devil also
इम्मलावुम योवलन नाह पार्कुंबुलुदे
When we see in the third John
पदिमून पदिरेण्डा मधियारम पदिमून पदिनाल्ला पार्कुंबुलुदे
Second chapter thirteen fourteen
अंग एन्न सोलिडकरदे
What does it say there
फोल्लांगणे जयित्त दिनाल नाह नुगलकेरुदुगर
I have returned you because you overcome the wicked man
अंद्र सभिले इरुद्दानय वालिबरले पिसासे जयिच्छत
The devil was overcome You have overcome the devil
अनाल मेसेज यारके
To whom this warning
अनाल मेसेज यारके
To whom this message
अदे वालिबरले कुल मेसेज
To the youth people
ओरु देवुंडय पुलय वालिबनो वायरिबनो पिसासे जयिच्छुगु
Yes child of God whether he is a young man or an old man he has to overcome the devil
अवन फोल्लांगणे जयित्तुगु
He has overcome the wicked one
अवन वरुआ अवन तोरत्त
He will come you have to chase him
अवन वरुआ अवन यदुत्त निले
You have to resist him he may come
तेव पट्टा अवनकील नी कुण्डुंदर
You have to bring him suppressed
सात्थानय ओनुगल कालगलिन कीले अवर नसिक्युबुद
He will blow his Saturn under your feet
मेरनास्ल ओरु बाहिंग्रम आविल नर्म्बव
In Metra's one man will fill in the spirit well
अवर यारकनेमे CRPF लान इरुकर
Already he was in CRPF
अनाल एप्पुर्द आविल नर्म्बो अंद्र गन पुडिच्च मर्दा आविल नर्म्ब
Every day he will feel in the spirit like catching the
यापुर्व एंद्र कुड़त्रला पात्तला अंद्र एक्क वाटिसनु पुडिच्च साइल्यल आविल नर्जिरुप
In the same style he will be filling in the spirit in every meeting
अवर ओन्नाल पात्त
On the eyes
सात्थान ओण्टा माटितान नी एन्ना पन्नुवे
If Saturn comes to in front of you what will you do
लाइम पुलिरमर्दि पुलिंजुरुन
I will crush him like a lion
लाइम पुलिरमर्दि पुलिंजुरुन
I will crush him like a lion he said
अंद्र ओरु विरित्तनमा देवुनोड नेरिंजिपोर ओरु वाल्क
Like a life of a goat when you are with God
पिसासे नी यदुत्त निक्कन
You have to resist the devil
नी पोई पोराडि चंडा बोट्टु अवन्ड कट्टी पुरंदु ओरनुन्नु बाइबिल चोल
The Bible says you should go don't go and fight with him and run and come
नी ओनुडय स्टैंडल नी निन्ना पोर
If you stand in your standard that is
ओन्नय देवन एयरपडित्ति वेत्त स्थानत्त्य निन्नु नी अवन यदुत्त रुना पोर ओडिटेर
You have to stand in the standard where God has appointed you if you resist him he will run away
इदा नाह वरटिटे वरुन निंग टक्कन निन्निटिके नाह अदु वेनिस्टिरो
The dog will be going on chasing if he is
निंग तिरिमी पोनिके नाह अदु कोलचिकित्ते पिन्नाल पोइटेर
If you go back again it will work again
इदा दान पिसासुन्डय कान्सेप्ट
This is the concept of the devil
नी मिंझिन नाह अवन केंजु नी केंजिन नाह अदु वेनिसिवा मिंझु
If you go forward he will also come if you If you bet him he will also
वराल पिसासे तोरत्ती तोरत्ती पात्ता अदु पोहवेल
One day one man also going on chasing the devil it will not go
करेजसना प्लीज दायुसे नी पोइद
He bet him please you will please go
अब्बय प्लीज ना परगा अदे इन्ग बोहर
How it will go after saying please
एत्निक्कन
You have to resist him
सर्वाय अवर्कत्तनी तारिच्चि निक
You have to put on the whole armor of God
ओनुडय देवीक सत्य नी उयर्पित्त निक्केवें
You have to revive with the spirit of God and stand
येसु विन नामत्रोल्ला वल्लमय अधिकारत्तिनी काइल एडुकन
You have to take the power and authority of Jesus Christ
नाह नेत्राइट अदा ना कात्रु गुडल बेसन
Yesterday he was talking
तेवन नसरनाक येसुय परिसूत आविनालु वल्लमिनालु अभिषेकमनिन
God anointed Jesus Christ with the power and anointing
नम्मुड़ि निन्निकर
What we think
ओरत्रक अभिषेकम बरम्बुले येसे शेक कायरिच्चि अनान्य बस वरला नाह ओन्ने निस्टिरो ओनुके नाह गडिचिर्चि वल्लमा गडिचिर्चि बट इदु गडिकल अभिषेकम गडिक
We say when a man shakes we are getting the
नाह नेता द पडिच्च पर यानक्या मनिले एरिच
After study that I also got in it
अनाल
What is that
वेरम निस्टिरोगर
What the scripture say
अवर नसरनाक येवन नसरनाक येसुय
The Lord the anointed the Lord Jesus Christ that's right
अनाल सिंजार
What did he do
वल्लमिनालु अपोसलर पत्ता मधियारम मुपत्ति एट्टा वसनम
Apostle ten thirty-eight
अनियपार्गे रेण्ड अनुभव
There are two experiences of here
येसुय ओमुदलावध अंद्र परिसूत आविनालु रेण्डावध इदल नेकराह वल्लमिनालु नेरैकर
God is anointing Jesus of Nazareth with Holy Ghost and the power
एत्निक्काह
Why
इन्द्र रेण्डु तन्मय अभिषेकम वरुम्बुलुदे
When the anointing comes in this two level
इदल रेण्डु सैल्बडुरुके
These are there are two activities are in this
नल्ला बाइबिल रुकांगला नल्ला अंद्र वसनत्त क्लियर पनिक
Those are having the Bible clear that
देवन नसरनाक येसुय परिसूत आविनालु वल्लमिनालु अभिषेकमनिन
God anointed Jesus of Nazareth with Holy Ghost and the power
इन्द्र रेण्डु अनुभवगल वंदु अंद्र अभिषेकत्तल रेण्डु तन्मय सैल्बड
There are two nature in anointing
उन्रु परिसूत आविन देवुंडय वल्लम
One is Holy Ghost and another is power of God
इन्द्र देवुं अंद्र परिसूत आविन अरंगिन अदनाल
Because of the Holy Ghost descended upon him
अवर एबुडि मार्नार
How he became
नन्मय सिगरवराय मारिन
He became a man to do good
वल्लमिनालु अभिषेकमन्न पट्ट अदनाल
Because he was anointed by the power
पिसासुगल तोरत्तुगरवराहु यादियसरै गुणनमाकरवराहु सुटितिरिंद
He was roaming over healing all the sick people and chasing the devil
ओनुलक नल्ला पुरुंजिरुकुन नाह निन्निकर
I hope he could understand that
परिसूत आविनालु ओरु मनिषुने देवन नेरपोवदु एत्निक्काह
Oh God is anointing a man with the Holy Spirit
इन्द्र सरीरत्त्ले
In this body
इन्द्र ओलग वाल्किल
In this world alive
नम्मुडु रेण्डु सत्यिल पोरार
There are two powers are attacking us
ओन्नु पावो मत्तुन्ड्रु मरन
One is death and another one is sin
इन्नुन्नु सरिया चोल
If you say rightly
पावुम एंग्र वेरोरु प्रमाणम इल्लात्तल तीमय एंग्र ओरु सत्य नमकुल लपोरार
The evil or the sin of the another law is struggling with this
इदय रोमर येला मधियारत्ल पगडिल पार्कुंबुलुदे
When we see in Romans seven chapter here
नन्मय सय्यन नाह वरुबुगर
I want to do good
अनाल नन्मय सय्यवदो एन्नुडत्ले इल्ल
But I don't have anything to do good
कारण
व्हास इसे
यनकुल वेरोरु तीमय इल्लात्तल पावुम एंग्र ओरु प्रमाणम पोराडुकरदे नाह ओनुरुगर
I feel some power like the law against sinners
इन्द्र अरिकेल एरुकुम्बुलुदे
When we were in this
अवन्डय वार्ते एबुडिवरुकरदे
The world was his world
निर्पंदमान अन्मनिषुन नाह यार ने नमरन सरीर त्रंड्रे विड्विक्क गो
Who I am a Russian man who can deliver me from the body of death
यार विडलय आकरदे
Who has delivered
रोमर एट्टी यरंडिन्बडी पार्कुंबुलुदे
According to Romans eight two
कृष्णुडय जीवन उल्ला आविन प्रमाणम
The life of in Christ
पावुम मरनम एंग्र प्रमाणत्त निन्न्रे नाह विडलय आकिट्ट
It delivered me from the sin and death
अभिषेकम परिसूत आविले ओरु विडलय उंडा गर
In the Holy Spirit there is a deliverance
अनाल विडलय
What kind of delivery
अंद्र तीमय एंग्र प्रमाण वेलगी नम एदुकुल वंदर नन्मय सिगरवराय मारुगर
We remove from the nature of the law we will come to the state of good
इन्दिक एत्तन वेरुकुल नन्मय वेलसे
How many of us goodness is working in you
इन्दिक आनेगरुडय ओरु प्रिय वेलिचम एन्नन
What is the great light of many people
अभिषेकम नाह ओड़ने कुदिच्चरुआंगे इंगरुन्ना अंगो बोवांगे अंगरुन्ने इंगोरुआंगे निन्निकर
Anointing means they will jump from here to there
इल्ला काइत्त टुआंगा अब्बीन निन्निकर
They are thinking they just clap the hand
ओरु शेकुंडाहुन निन्निकर
There is shaking of the body
प्रियमानुले इदलाह ओरु उन्नदत्तिन बैलन वरुम्बुलु आरम्बस्टेज
This is the power from God comes means it is a starting period
ओरु हेवी शॉक ओरु तनाडिक्न नच्चिगो
There is a heavy shock for attack per man
एन्ना नरको
What will happen
एन्ना नरको ओरु अडिच्चि तूक एरिंजुर
It will take him and throw him
अनाल
But
अदु मात्रम अल्लह
Not only that
अंद्र शॉक वक्किरम्बार्गे वच्च ओण्ने अवनके पालविदमान स्वावंगल्ला मात्र
After getting the shock he is getting the changes in his character
अंद्र कैंसर अंद्र ब्राइन ट्यूमर लाह एदल वच्च तटिर लाइट माइल्ड वच्च अदे वेलियर्ड
The cancer and the
इलेक्ट्रिक शॉक मुलमा वेलियपुन
From the electric shock they are taking out the cancer and the brain tumor everything
इदु दाह परिसूत आविन उन्मयान तन्मय
This is a true nature of
इन्द्र परिसूत आविन उल्ला वरुम्बुलुदे ओनुडय स्वावंगल्ला मात्र सरीरत्त्ले सुगम उंडा गर
When the Holy Spirit comes in there is change in your characters as well as healing your body
तीमय अदे वेलिय कुण्डु बो नन्मय सिगरवराय ओनु माच्च
It brings out the evil from you and make you a man to do good
अदुतदाह
नेह
वल्लमिनालु अभिषेकमनिन
He is anointed with power
अंद्र वल्लम ओनकुल वरुम्बुलुदे
When the power comes in you
अदे अधिकारत्तिक अन्भिकर
It shows authority
अंद्र वल्लमय वंद ओड़न
When the power comes in you
ओन्नु यादी पो सुगम आकर पिसासु ओडुगर
You are getting the sickness from the healing from the sickness
मत्तय युपत्त ओण्रिन्बडी पार्कुंबुलुदे
This is according to Matthew ten one
इम्मलावुम पिसासुगल तोरत्त
First of all to chase
यादियसरै गुणमाक्को अवनका अधिक आरंग कुडुत
God gave power to chase the devil too
अदल्लान अदा इन्द्र वल्लमिले रेण्डुमय सैल्बडुगर
In this power these two activities are happening
पिसासु ओडनु यादी सुगम आकन
This is also should heal and the devil also should run away
मत्तोरु गुणमाक्को दे पार्किल
Not to heal
मत्तावर्गल सुगमाक्को दे पार्किल
Other than others are getting the healing
नाह इम्मलावुम द सुगमाकन
We got to heal ourselves
वेदम निस्टिरोगर
What the scripture says
निस्टिरोगर
What the scripture says
वाईथियन ओन्नय इम्मलावुम द निसे नी गुणमाक्य
You should heal yourself
अनाल ओरु देवुंडय पुलय अभिषेकत्तुकुल वरुम्बुलुदे इवेहलालान नरक्क कुडिय
So when your child of God comes in the anointing all this will happen
नींग फोल्लांगणे जयिक्क
You have to overcome the wicked man
पिसासे जयिक्क
You have to overcome the devil
अल्लान नमकु देवन कुडुत ओरु कट्टल
That is the commandment God has given to us
ओरु सलस इसरुल पो
Some disciples wait
पिसासुगल तोरत्ति वच्च वंदु
When they chase the devil and come back
अवनकु बाहिंगर असंतोष
They were very They were very happy because the devil has gone out
चेन्नईले
In Chennai
ट्रेनिंगले रुकांगलु विश्वास उपयनुन्नु नोपान
There is a when I was in training
फेथ टूरनु नोपान
There is faith tour
अवनकु कुण्डु ओरु स्पार्टल एरिकु
They will drop in one place
अल्लाद अवन विश्वास विडुकु बोकुदा विश्वासी विडुकु बोक
He should not go to the faith or faith believers house
नाल्लाल अंजलाल टाइम कुडुर
And there four or five days they will give time
अवन इंग गड़े तेंगिकुन
They got to stay somewhere
इंग गड़े साप्तुकुन
They got to eat somewhere
ऊळियन जंजी कडचा सापुन इल्लान फास्टिंगले सुटित्वर
They got to go to the ministry and if they get something they can eat
कुरिक्यप्पट्ट डेटला वंद चर्चले चैंद
The particular day they got to come back to the church
पत्त्वरि युरुद्दर गुण्डु बो ओरु ओवरत्तल एरिकु वच्चिगो
About ten or twenty people will be dropped in some place
सलस ग्रुप येल्लाल्ला फास्टिंगले वंद
Some people some group will come for seven days
योगल एरिकु वट्ट ग्रामुम फुल्ला पक्का इंडु वर्न उल्लय ओड़मन तोरत्ति वच्च
If the village is fully indigenous they will not allow them
इदे वेट वेल्ला ड्रेसपुट वरेवराद सगनमय सरील उरुक्ल
They don't come with a white dress they will chase them
इप्पुडि तोरत्ति वच्च गस्टपुट्ट अवन इरुकर
Some also suffering with the chasing
सलस ग्रुप पोन ओण्नय याह अवनमर नेते शोपनम्बात्तन चोलि कुप्पी सापाड गुडुत अवनकु राजमर्याद गुडुत नाल्लाल अंगे वच्चिगो
Some people are I got a dream like you I saw that they were honoring them
फास्टिंग ईस्टिंग ओरु वालियाहि कस्टपुट्ट वर्न पात्तिय
Is the part is coming suffering with fasting
अवन तिरिमी वंद चोलर अरिकेन
What is the confession they say
कन्ने तरणदित्त पो पिसासे नाह ओडिर
If I open the eyes and say the devil go means it will go
अदिक्क पोई मलंगाल पोट्टु ओरु मिनार सुटिकरिच्चि आण्डवर अदमनिचरिंग इदमनिचरिंगलान चोली जेबिच्चि तिरिपि मलंगाल पोट्टु वासम्बोट्टु तोरत्तुलाल कन्ने तरणदित्त एय पिसासे पो अब्बीन निसिद ओडिपिर दे नाह इवन फुल फास्टिंगले इरुका यार
Because they are in full fasting no need to pray for one hour and take fasting or anything If you open the eyes and go to
येसु नेत्तल वंद अवन चोनांग पिसासुगल इन्गलकु कुल्पुडिर
They came to Jesus and said the devils are subjecting at us
येल्लोद विश्वासीगल तिरिमी वंद चोलरा पिसासुगल इन्गलकु कुल्पुड
The seven disciples came and said the devil
Seventy disciples
Seventy disciples came and said that devils are subjecting at us
येल्लोद वर वंद चोलरांग पिसासुगल इन्गलकु कुल्पुड
The devils are subjecting at us that so seventy said
इब्ब कुल्पुडि दाह ओढ़दान निकिदान नम ओड़रमा इन्न तरल
The devil is going running or not are we running
फोल्लांगणे निंगल जयिक्क
You have to overcome the wicked man
अनाल इन्दिक एत्तन वेरुका अंद्र अनुभव
How many of you have you such kind of experience
मूण रावधारु ओरु विश्वासी जयिक्क वेंडिदे नम्मय जयिक्क
First of all a believer has to overcome obstacles
ओन्नय नी जयिच्छिन्ना नी दान उन्मयान अन्मनिष
If you overcome yourself you are a true man
एत्तन वेरु कुण्डल जयिक्क मुडिदे
How many of you can overcome yourself
ओनुगल निंग जयिच्छत अदल्ला मामसत्तिन क्रियेगल
That is the deeds of the body
आविनाले सरीरत्तिन सहिगलय अलित्ताल पिलाइप
If you modify the deeds of the body for the spirit you will live
इन्द्र नम्मय जयिक्करदे कुदा नमकुल एरु कुडुर परिसूत आविय गुडुर
God has given us the Holy Spirit to we got to overcome obstacles
इन्द्र मामसत्त्त्कु पलक क्रियेगल
There are so many deeds for the flesh
मामसत्तिन क्रियेगल अवयावन
What are the deeds of the flesh
अनाल एवेब अदु पावर लिस्टेय रुकिंग
There is a big list
कलात्य एइंदा मधियारत्ल निंग पडिच्च
You can study in Colossians fifth chapter
अंग चोलपट्ट ओरु प्रिय बट्टीले रुके मामसत्त्त्ल रुन्नु वेलिपुट्ट रस सैल्बड
The deeds of the flesh is given a big list
इदे एबुडि जयिपदे
How can he overcome this
इदुक दाह परिसूत आविन
So the Holy Spirit is
इन्द्र परिसूत आविन वच्च ओनुडय सरीरत्त्त्त नी कट्टुपुडिति एयर
Keeping this Holy Spirit you have to go and control your body
नी अप्पुर्वन ट्वेंटी-फोर-होस पेसिटे एयर कर पात्तिय
You will be a party always talking for twenty-four hours
ओनिको ओरु कडिवालम बो
You need a bridal for you
अदे पेस्सवय अब्बीन निपाट
You have to stop talking everything
नाह लास्ट वीक ओरु सकोदर्न ओरु ग्रामत्त्य ओरु पात्तु किलोमीटर तलिक सान्दिच
I met a brother in the village last week
अवर चोलर
He says
ओरय नाल्ला
In one day
यानकु मून गारित्तल विडुत
I got three deliveries of three things
मून गारित्तल यानकु ओरय नाल्ला विडुत
In one day I got deliveries for three things
उन्रु सिगरेट
One is from cigarette
मत्तुन्ड्रु कापी कुडिप
Another from the drinking coffee
मूण रावधारु सरुप पोट्टु टुप्प सरु पड़ामय नाह रुको सरुपय विडुत
I left of the chapel the third one
अवर सीपीएम गड़े
He is not a CPM man
RC man
He is an Aussie man
इप्पस सीएसएल रुकर नाह निन्न तेरिल
I do not have in CSA or not
काल्ल आणि इन्नु वलरुन वलरुन तरिम अदे वलरुन्द वलरुन्द वारा वारं कत्य वच्च विट्टी विट्टी पोडिट
Every week will be going on cutting the root that one comes in the herd
अदे तिरुमत तिरुम पुत्तु मर्द वलरुन्द
It is like a cancer it will again
अवर चोलर नाह सरुप पोट्टु बोनामा हील्स पोट्ट मर्द नंदु बो अवला कस्टपुट्ट नाह
If I put on the chapel like a heels I got to walk
बाहिंग्रमा वलिक्क वारत्तला एब्बल साइस कुन आर्त्तर्तु पोडिट
I will be going on cutting every week it will be
इन्दिला अदु ओन्नमय पन्नु मुडिय
I couldn't do anything with that
अदे मारि काफी इन्नाल कुडिकाम इरुक्युमुडिय पाइन निम्स दुको ट्रुप इंगर्नाद यापुडियो काफी कुच्च
Once in fifteen minutes I have to drink coffee
अदे मारि चेन स्मोक
Same change was a change smoker
इन्द्र मून यानकु इन्द्र उन्नु सरीरत्त्ल वेदन इन्द्र रेण्डु बैड काबिट
These two bad habits and one is another pain in the body
ओरय नाल चर्चले बोई
Only one day I can say to the church
इदे पोदु इन्ने के यानकु विडलय कुडुत्रिंग पोदुन्नु सोन
Lord it is enough he give me deliverance
अल्लाद
It is
वीटिक वंदल रुन्नु काफी इत्न रोशमा मुपत्तो रोशमा कुडिल
I didn't drink coffee for thirty-one years
मुपत्तो रोशमा ना सिगरेट टुक्टा पोन
I did not go to the smoker for thirty-one years
अन्ने के वंद सरुप कालति पोट्ट इन्नमय सरुप बो अन्ने ओड़ा आणि अन्योड ओड़िय
That a root also has gone out from that day
अवर सीपीएमले रुकवंडी आल
He was a man towards me in CPM
योस्चु बार
You think about him
नाह निसे
What are we doing
मामसत्तिन क्रियेगल निसे जयिक्क
We got overcome the deeds of the flesh
मुडियलन्नु चोलुरु यार
Who says sir you cannot
चल
वेरम
विश्वासीकरवनके यल्लांगो
One who believes can do all things
ओनकु एबुडि ओलग प्रकारमा ओरु वाहिराक्य रुक अदे इदल गुण्डोर आविकुरि रीढिल तिरिपि वड
You have to bring the jealous of the world to the spiritual level
ओलगम मामिसम पिसास इदे जयित्त वंदा विश्वास
A believer who a believer is one who overcome the devil world
जयंगोल्लुगरवन येवनो अवन इन्नुडय आलयत्ल तूनाह माच्वे
One who is overcomer I will make him a pillar in my temple
नी ओरु तूनाह नी इन्द्र ओलगत्त्ल एस्टल बट्टा दाह पर्लोत्त्ल ओने तूनाह नेरुत
If you are a pillar and activate in this world you can't make us a pillar
वेरम निस्टिरोगर
What the scripture says
इदे ओलगत्र नी एत्त कट्टुगरायो अदु पर्लोत्त्ल कट्टपो
What are the things you point on it it will be bound on the heaven
इन्द्र ओलगत्र नी एबुडि रुकर अदन्डिय प्रदिबलन दाह पर्लोत्त्ल
How you will be in the year it is a reward for you will get in the night
इन्दिल नाकल्य नी ओरु तूनाह रुकन अप्पुर्ला पर्लोत्त्ल नी तू जयित नी तूनाह निक्क
Well also he should be a pillar then only he will be an overcomer and be a pillar
यरेम्या मुदलामधियार पदिन्त्ता वसनत्त्ल पार्कुंबुलुदे
Yeremya one eighteen when we see
ओन्नय ओरु इरुम्बु तूनाह इन्नाह माच्च
I will make you an iron pillar God
ओरु देवुंडय पुलय गरव ओरु सरियान ओरु तूनाह निर्क्क
A child of God should stand like a pillar
नी ओरु तून
You are a pillar
ओन आसके इन्द्र वल्लमय के एडंगु
No you shouldn't give any power to shake you
अनी ओरु स्त्रमान ओरु सरियान ओरु देवीकमान ओरु सत्य उल्लाम निर्क्क
You have to stand as a steady man for the law
इन्दिक इसल्ला सोनगल्लन केल विलुंदर निंग पाक
You can see some people are following him in the
नी इन्द्र सभाइले ओरु विलुंदु बोन तूनाह रुको निर्क्कर ओरु तूनाह
In this search you should be a pillar standing not falling one
एसे केल युरुत्यार पदिन्त्त्ल अदि तूनगल्ला विलुंदु नच्चिर
In a essay kill twenty-six eleven Twenty-six eleven all the pillars have fallen down
इन्दिक एत्नियु विलुंदु तूनाह रुकर इल्लान लिक्कर तूनाह रुकर
How many of us are fallen pillars or standing pillars
नी ओरु तूनाह इन्द्र ओलगत्र निक
You have to stand as a pillar you have to stand in the world
एदुक तूनाह निक
Why you have to stand as a pillar
मुदलावध नी सत्यत्त्त्कु तूनाह मार
First of all you should be a bigger pillar for the truth
इद्र सत्यत्त्त नी अरिंजिरुक इद्र सत्यत्त्त्कु नी ओरु तूनाह निक
You know the truth you should stand as a pillar for this truth
मुदलाम तीमत्त्यल निंगल अदा वार्ते निंग पार
You can learn in the first Timoth
अदस देवुंडल देवुंडय वीडागे सत्यत्त्त्कु तूनाह इरुकरदे एन्डु चोलपुट्ट
It is a ground and pillar of the church it is given
मुदलाम तीमत्त्य मूण रामधिकारम पदिन्त्ता वसनत्त्ल इन्द्र वार्ते चोलपुट्ट
First Timothy three fifteen it is said
सत्यत्त्त्कु तून
The pillar for the truth
इन्द्र नी अरिंद सत्यत्त्त्कु नी ओरु तूनाह निंद्रादा नी जयिक्क
You can overcome only if you stand as a pillar for the truth you speak you know
नी ओरु तून अद्र सत्यत्त्त्कु नी तूनाह निक
You are a pillar you have to stand as a pillar for the truth
इन्द्र सभाइकल नी ओरु तूनाह रुक
Are you a pillar for this church
इन्द्र सभाइकल नी ओरु तूनाह निर्क्क मुडिया दाह तान कत्र ओनु कुण्डु
God was brought to you you should be a pillar for this church
इन्द्र सभाइले रुन्नु इन्द्र सत्यत्त्त्कु नी ओरु तूनाह मार नी जयिताल ओने पर्लोत्त्ल अंग देवन तूनाह माच्च
Being the church and become a pillar and overcome you will become a pillar
कलात्यर यरंडु उन्न्दल वार्कुंबुलुदे
Revelation two nine when we see
पणिरण्ड अपोसलरला ओरु सिलर तूनगल्ला एस्टल
Among the twelve disciples somewhere like a pillar act
Vasheenag Paranga, panirindu vede, apostolar
The twelve, there are twelve disabled
Panirindu apostolarla
There were twelve disabled
Mune vede, pati Bible enna choludhe
What about the three people, the Bible says
Enna choludhe, thungalagayenappattadana, Keba, Yovan, Yakov
They were counted as pillars, these three
Neegabible, neegapadichu paranga
You study in the Bible
Suviseshathu poratti paranga
You turn the Gospels
Enna choliirukkare
What is said here
Engalala, yesu mukiyamana, oru sambhavukuparara, indha mune vede, anganipam
Wherever Jesus went for a important part, these three will be standing
Oru malaila, maruumai, kanbita
It shows the amount of transfiguration
Anga yarundadu
Who was there
Pedro, Yovan, Akav
Peter, John, James
Innorathal, oru pule, maritholandu, ellupudukaysu pona
Jesus went to resurrect a child which was dead
Matthelary, neegichit, avum mune vede, vodhicham prayipanna
God put them, this tree inside
Yooschuparanga, kethsamanathu thottukupi paranga
You see it, the kethsamanathu
Madhavangala, ombe vede, yettu vede, oru side
All the eight people will be in what side
Mune vede, indha
These three will be together
Oru aranmanila
One is in the palace
Indha mune vede, andha, yesu, close up, irukkara
They were very close to Jesus
Ivargal, thungalaga sailbaduk
They were acted as pillars
Indha sabaila, ayara viswasiyirukkala
Thousands of believers may be in the church
Anandha sabiki, enna veda, thun veda
But we need a pillar for the church
Ivandu building, nee papatikina
You see this building
Idu oru panirundu thunla, nee panirundu, padinundu thunla, neekunavichukkala
It is standing in fifteen pillars
Indha panirundu thun, da namu mukiyamana
These fifteen pillars are very important
Ethanavu, changalavichu, indha side, alla, adachikadu, vichirundhalo
Though we have kept many bricks here
Idi, adeipol, indha sabaila, ethanaviswasiyirundhalo, namil, ethanavere, thungalai, irukkara
So many believers are maybe in the church, how many of you are a pillar in the church
Ni oru thun
You are a pillar
Oru kalathal, nee vermyakarandavu, oru ala, irukkala
You are a man empty once upon a time
Adiyamathal parkumbele
Let me see in Genesis
Oru vanantharamana, oru edathala, palana, uleidukkare edathala, yakavu, paduthukarandha
Jacob was lying down in a wilderness, calling up dogs
Avur vanantharathala, paduthukarandha
He was lying down in a wilderness
Nal, oru nariulpana, nariulporathala, oru nalliirevallakarandha
He was in a bit annoyed when the foxes were also walking there
Anga ponaavudhu, yenamakailiya, pillo, airpillo, thituparama, thulandu, thitupam
He did not carry any air pillow as we carry
Namibengamana, allan thitukalambiru
Wherever we go, we are carrying the air pillow nowadays
Beddugitlan, chattham, conventionika varu
They are taking even the bed, everything only coming to the convention
Anan, ivan kila karandavu, oru kalladu, enna jia, talaki vichipadu
He took a stone from down and kept as a pillar for him
Sopponakadachaparake
After getting the dream
Andavara, pathaparake
After saw the draw
Indha kalla, appriyae, era, maadida, thunaamadida
He made this stone as a pillar
Naan niruthana, indha kall, idu thunaaga, idu devanukku veedai maruva
This will be the house of God, the pillar, which I said
Engiyookarandavu, unnakathar, nee konduvada
God has brought you from somewhere, you were lying
Onnakarchita
God saved you
Onakor Abhishekamukutha
God has given you anarchy
Onaasirvaditha
He blessed you
Ona oru thunaagamachav
He want to make you a pillar
Nee indriki, indha bumiil, nee sabiki thunaag, satyathukuthunaag, irundhalada, parlogathal, nee devundiyalayathal thunaagamaruva
If you are today as a pillar for the truth and the church, in the heaven also you will become a pillar
Ni ethanavere, indha thungalagannirkavirumbu
How many of you want to stand as a pillar here
Indha thungalan, nee mulu vaidu, andhalanikidhi
The whole weight is folded by the pillar
Yoradanakarandavuludhe
When they cross Jordan
Andavara, anta, pace nar
Lord, talk to him
Yoradanla, panirindu, karkal, enna say, naat
They plant, they plant twelve stones in Jordan
Trinundu, apdi oru kattalakudutha
Suddenly, God gave a command
Yoradanla, panirindu, kall, veliyadut, konduva, veliyanaatirundan
You have to take twelve stones from Jordan and plant it in the outside
Tanikulla, kara kara, kall, a, urundu, 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 oru vali, ana, kall, veliyavirish
The stone which was in the water, after become rolling somewhat, it will take out
Yenakprashani, lam, veliyakarandavu, tanikulla, vandanaatiyach
Without any problem, the stone which was out, it came to the water now
Bible enna choludhe
What the scripture says
Andha karivurundu odukara, yoradanla, nadappattadan, indha thungal, innal varaini, irukkardhu
The stones are still, they are there, the flood over Jordan
Adukparake, vella vanduchu, enna vandhalo, adunidhira
It is going on standing though they get flood
Valkaila prashanakalvarum
You may get problems in your life
Kristova markathal, porattangalvarum
There are struggles in the Christian
Indha prashangangal, oru sela, point, nee chay, valkaila, kadaybudikunno, nee yosikumbedu, porattangalvarathan chayyum
You want to follow something from this message, you will get a struggle
Yellavathilime, kastarukke
In everything, there is suffering
Car water, avulakku, nalay experienceana, poru, adupati kavaleela, water, moody, ethanavrathal, idichanga, namalakka
Those are, when they get the first driving
Cycle water, vathukangala
You see the one who ride in the cycle
Yellankuppuravildundu, kai, kala, adichit, aduthnal, adusogamavari, kunduthiripisike, yaravu
After they will falling down and wounding everything, then only after got lost, get the healing, then right
Namakulla, andha sportyvan, oru mind, irundukidhi
We need a sporty mind in us
Enna yoradan karivurundu vandhalo, nee adu thun, andha porattathala, katharukai, neenikavendu
Whatever the Jordan flooded over, you have to stand for the Lord
Nee devanukka, nirkumbedu, ahalakappattavu
You are a man called to stand for the law
Vaanathanavakumbele, unnamay tharla, Bible choludhu, vaanathin thun, cholukare
When we see the heaven, we can't see anything but the Bible says you are a pillar
Bumiya vakkumbo, unnamay thiriyada, naa bumiikun thungalirukkara, Bible choludhu
The Bible says, when we see the world, nothing is there but there is pillar for that
Analam, andha thungalai, naan nilainiruthuvay, andavarcholuk
But God says, I'll set the pillars, he says
Ni oru thunaagirukkalam
You may be a pillar
Yoradanil, nindruvundrukala
You may be standing in Jordan
Halavidamana, porattangalmattil, neenindruvundrukala
You will be among various conflicts
Ananal, unnan nilainiruthuvay
But I will settle you
Satyathukai, neenirkumbedu
When you stand for the truth
Obadeshathirukai, nirkumbedu
When you stand for the gospel
Adhodu, naamathukai, neenirkumbedu
When you stand for the name of the Lord
Ni andavukai, vaalanu, asiputumbodu
When you want to live for that law
Yeluvatyayindham, sangidhum, naavasanathal parkumbele
In 75th Psalm 3 verse
Enna choliirukkare
What is said here
Naanidin thungalai, nilainiruthuvay
I'll settle the pillar
Unayalaita, devanuruvu, unayavidamattaa
The God who called you never leave you
Avar unnan nilainiruthavallavara, irukkara
He is able to settle you
Naanidin thungalai, nilainiruthukara
I'll settle the pillar
Ethanavere, indikey, katharukai, nirkavirumbu
How many of you want to
Ni devundiyalayathal
In this church
Ni thunaagammaranunna
If you want to become a pillar
Indha bumiil, nee thunaagammaranu, nan chonnay
I stole you
Indha bumiil, nee thunaagammaranu, ennamay, nan chonnay
In this world, also you should become a pillar
Adina, angan, nee thunaammaranu, inga thunaammaranu
If you want to become a pillar in the heaven, you have to be a pillar here
Devundiyalayun, angoru vartha, usepanappattara
There is, God is using the Temple of God
Bumiil, oru devundiyalay, irundadu
There was a temple in the earth also
Salem onudiyay, devundiyalay
The temple of Salem
Naadu Salem onudiyalayathal
In the temple of Salem
Rendu thuna, nee padichirunna
They settled two pillars
Ennade
What was that
One, one yogin, matthundu, povas
One is yogin and one is povas
Yirandham naalagamam, madhramadhyaram, padinayindha vasanathal, ellutin badi, uladana, devalayathil, yarandu thungal
Second chronicle, 3:70, according literally, the two pillars
Rendu, andha rendu thuna, nee padithi, rendu thunukku, bearuvich
After setting the pillar, he named it
Yooschuparanga
You think about it
Devundiyalayathal, rendu thun, priyathun, nee padidha
He settled two pillars, great
Andha rendu thunukku, ovunukku, oru bearuvich
Each had a name also
Apo devundiyalayathal, nirkav, namakkum parlogathal, bearukke, aranatha, andha vasanathal, modalaavudhu, aschav, en devunadiya, namaath, nagaratthi, namaath, naanavunukke, pudiya, namaath, naanavunukke, tharipay
I'll give you the new name of the city of my God
Yooschuparanga
You think about it
Indhi rendu thun, nee padithi, rendu bearuvich, one yogin, one, inondu, povas
After setting the two pillars, the two names again on a change
Indriki, nee bulogathal, irukkardana, sabaila, nee thunaagamari, irukkaya
Are you becoming a pillar in the worldly church
Indha olagathal, irukkarchila, sabai, sari, christvin, sariyamag, sabaila, neenithunaarukkila
Are you a pillar in the church, there is the body of God
Oru viswasiyin thunaammaranu
Each and every believer should be a pillar
Satyathukuthunaammaranu
You became a pillar for the truth
Orattathala, yoradanla, nirkav, karkal, thurulai, marav
You became like a pillar in the, which is standing in Jordan
Engiyarunnal, katharunakamay, mahimayamachav
Wherever you may be, God will make you a glorious one
One yogin
One station
Adina, enna arta
What is the meaning
Stable.
That is establishing.
Povas.
Povas.
What is it?
It is strength.
You wrote the correct name. One Yogi, one Povas.
One station and another.
One is stable, and one is.
It is establishing and one is strong.
This is the man of God, he wrote his name.
God has kept in this mind and kept the name of them.
We must have some things to stand.
Some things should be stand in ourselves.
You must have some things to stand.
Some things should be started in you and be established.
What should be established in you? If you are a pillar in this world. If you build a pillar in a brick. If you knock it, what will happen? It will fall, piece by piece. But if in this concrete. It will be stronger than that. Each and every metal glass, each and every nature. Ah, that is Yogi, and that is stable.
Station is establishing.
If you want to be established strongly. First of all, you need the scripture. Ah, I will establish it.
As soon as the scripture, the law says.
Seven hundred and eighty, five. Faithful person must be established. You study the Bible. You research it. If you have a lot of trouble, you will read it. Ah? If you have a lot of trouble, you will read it.
If you are in a mood, sir, take the Bible and read.
If you have a lot of trouble, you will read it.
Unless your scripture is not rejoicing me, I will draw.
If you read it, you will have a lot of trouble.
When we take that and study.
You have a lot of trouble.
Your scripture is.
Another one, we have a lot of trouble.
Nothing is rejoicing for us.
Ah, you must be a pillar.
So the scripture should be established.
Ah, that is a promise you must be a pillar.
There is a statue or a.
Yes, I am fifty one, four. Ah, the Lord's.
The law, the law.
Ah, that is a light for you. There is a law for the church. There is a law for the servant of God. There is a law for the believer. If you are a father, you must have a law. Ah, you must have a law.
Your mother also has some laws.
You must have a law.
Each and every child of God has a law.
You must have a law.
Each and every child of God should make this law in us.
I will stand with the tabernacle of David which was fallen. I will establish you in the days which you are in the old days. You may be a. You may stumble. You may bruise. If you take the Bible and read, God again made you and established you and your family. Ah, Povas.
That is next forward.
Ah, I will show the strength. A faithful person must be a strong man. Although you are not a strong man in the body. You should be a strong man in your city. You must be weak in your faith. Ah, you are not a faithful person. Keep a powerful man by glorifying God. Ah, you are a strong man.
You have to come under the right test.
Ah, that is the one who is a thief.
So that we are giving the.
The one who is a thief. They will get a strength.
They will get new strength.
Ah, you are a strong man.
They will go on waiting the presence, how they will get the strength.
Ah, you are a new one. Ah, you are a new one.
Regarding the people of Israel, the people say they are having the strength of unity.
Ah, you are a Christian, you are a Christian.
Caleb says, after eight years, I got the same strength which I had earlier.
The strength, the power, spirit of God is strength. How many of you want to receive this strength? Whoever is a thief, he will be a thief.
I will make you a pillar, one who overcomes in my temple.
How many of you want to become a pillar in this day? How many of you want to stand as a pillar today? Those who want to become a closer. In this year, you should become a pillar. In this truth, you must be a thief.
You should become a pillar for this truth.
In this church, you must be a thief.
You should change as a pillar for this church.
Ah, you will be a thief.
God will establish you.
You will get a struggle.
There will be conflicts.
Whoever is a thief, you will be a thief.
You stand as a stone which is planted in the Jordan, you stand for the law.
The thief who is a thief, whoever is a thief, he will be a thief.
How much a bit, they might dig, if the stone is still standing in the Jordan.
Ah, that is.
What does this show?
The Christian is a thief. Ah, he is a depth and breadth and length. Ah, the stone, however strong it is, it is a thief.
How much strong the stones of Florida means it will be there.
Ah, the children have a thief.
They planted it.
Hundreds of them, today, we have a lot of them, they are a thief.
Today also those stones are standing, those.
Ah, whoever is a thief, you will be a thief.
Whatever Jordan flooded over, it is standing.
Ah, no problem, Christians, you are a thief.
Whatever conflict you come to the deep love of Christ, you can stand.
How many of you want to overcome? Let us close our eyes for two minutes and relax. Ah, only for two minutes. Ah, you are a Christian.
You need a right anointing in you.
God wants to make you establishing in you. Whoever is a thief, you will be a thief.
The law, one who settled the tabernacle which was fallen down.
Ah, whoever is a thief, you will be a thief.
The law which you makes again settle you, which were in the whole of this.
Ah, I am the law which you strengthen. What was said? Ah, whoever is a thief.
Your crisis is strengthening me.
Ah, whoever is a thief, I will strengthen you.
I was sent to, God, Christ, will strengthen me.
How many of you want to become a pillar today? In this truth, you must be a pillar.
God wants to show this truth, you have to stand as a pillar for this truth.
Ah, let us overcome the world. Please, please. Oh, Jai Angul, your Lord, I will be a thief. Let us conquer the world, that I will make you a pillar, one who will overcome. In this church, you are a thief.
In this year, let you become a pillar for this church.
Ah, you are a Christian. Oh, Abishah, you are a thief.
The anointing and the scripture and the light, God is going to establish for you.
Ah, how many of you are a thief?
How many of you have such desire?
In this truth, I must be a thief.
Ah, we have to stand as a pillar for the truth.
Whoever is a thief, I will be a thief.
I got to stand as a pillar when the Jordan flooded over.
In this world, I will be a thief.
Only in this world, in the heaven also, I should become a pillar.
I will be a thief.
All my family are still like a pillar.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Shudabakarabakatara. Vishnabalabara, inaba. Amen, 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 hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen, amen. Ah, I have a belief. If you are a thief, you will be a thief. Ah, in this church, you must be a thief. Ah, you must be a thief. Ah, you must be a thief. A normal thief is not a thief. A thief is a thief. Ah, you must be 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 a thief. Amen, you must win. Hallelujah, Satan must win. Man should win. Jai Angul, you must be a thief. Hallelujah, Allah, you are a Christian. One minute. Everyone, shut up, you will be a thief. Ah, whoever is a thief. How many of you will win? Ah, whoever is a thief, you will be a thief. In this world, you are a thief. In this world, you are a thief. Hallelujah, Libia, you are a thief. Ah, you are a thief. Whoever is a thief, you must be a thief. Abarabakara. Yes, shut up. Libiakarabakatidamakatara. If you are a Christian, you must be a Christian. If you are a thief in this world, you must be a thief. In this church, you are a thief. If you are a thief, you must be a Christian. We must have a faith, a promise, a faith. If we are a Christian, we must be a Christian. If we are a thief in this land, we must be a thief. If you are a Christian, you must be a thief. If you are a thief in this world, you must be a thief. Jai Angul, you are a thief. Ah, everyone, you are a thief. Ah, you are a thief. Ah.
Ah, you are a thief. 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 Ah, you are a thief.
Ah, you are a thief. Ah, you are a thief. Hallelujah. 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 A Christian.